Evening everyone and welcome to the October 9th, 2024 meeting of the Dudley Planning Board. First item on the agenda, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America and is a republic of the states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next on the agenda, I would just like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. All right. Let's see. I did those in the wrong order, but I don't think that's going to be a big issue.
I don't think anyone knows.
All right, new business, approval of minutes, September 25th, 2024.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, September 25th, 2024.
All right, and we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay.
There's not a detente if I'm being mistaken.
All right, so Mr. Durgan made the motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Edmiston seconded the motion, and the vote was one abstention, Mr. Clark, all of us were aye. Uh, next. I was just reading this note about Mr. Horn. Oh, that's, okay, all right. All right, back to the agenda, um, all right, discussion about the alternate planning board member. So, are there any additional thoughts on this right now, or it would, would the, what is the general feeling of the board, do we want to wait for Mr. Horn to return? Because he did not share with myself, or as far as I know, anyone else, what he, what his decision would have been.
Well.
It's quite a crowd here.
I, I think I would probably be in favor of it being a decision made by the full board.
Would anybody?
I would agree.
Okay.
Depending on full board.
You agree, David, you want to abstain, remember? Okay, all right. So, uh, let's table that to the next meeting when Mr. Horn returns. All right, sign off for St. Anthony Road. This is, uh, I guess this was already discussed at their, at the Dudley Selectment Plan, uh, Selectments meeting on Monday, they're ready to move forward with this at town meeting, they just need us to sign off on it. And, uh, Jesse, for you, I told me today, why don't you share with the board what you told me today?
Yeah, so, um, I think on Friday, me, Jeff Welsh, which is the engineer for Graves Engineering, and I, we ended up inspecting the road, it looks good to go. Um, there was one thing that was there, which was there was just like no name on the sidewalk that says St. Anthony, but then MJ ended up confirming saying, I think, that they will be ordering the signs and everything, so that should be all set to go with it. Besides that, the road looks great, they have nice Cape Cod, uh, what is it called, what did he call them, Cape Cod?
Rooms.
Rooms, yeah, so it looks great, I thought, and then the drainage and everything looked great too, so, um, yeah. I was there, I think, 2:30 on Friday, so.
Okay, so do we, uh, do we need to make a formal vote on this, or do we, uh, do we make a formal vote that we're, we're referring it for approval to the?
Yeah.
Dudley Board of Selectmen?
And then once it gets approved.
Even though it was actually already approved by the, we're kind of doing it?
Reverse.
Backwards here, because they got a deadline.
Yeah, and then once that's all set to go, all we would just have to do is just sign off in one of the forms, so that they can present it in the fall town meeting, which is on the 21st.
Okay, all right.
So that we can get the easement in.
So does anybody want to make a motion to that effect, that, uh?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that, uh, we approve the St. Anthony Road, uh, certificate of completion, and forward that to the attention of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. We have a motion, so we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, oh, hold on, we've got it, okay. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. I'd like to abstain, I didn't listen to the Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm, I don't have any, really any background of St. Anthony Road or anything that happened here.
Okay, all right, that's.
3-1.
Three, all right, vote was 3-1 with Mr. Edmiston abstaining. And you got who, who made the motion, who seconded? Aura?
Yes, I did.
Okay, great. All right, uh.
Now, we had some documentation here, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm not too sure, we have a, some of the blanks, I'm not too sure what the information would be, sort of the specific dates, for example, for covenant dated.
So that would be, yeah, so the performance type of security, that's none, because we're kind of working in reverse with it.
All right.
So, Aura and I checked it here today, um, so that's why it's right to none here, um, maybe.
So are we to sign the?
Yeah, so I can pass this along, so you all can sign it, and that's about it.
So we need how many copies?
Just one, I have one here, Chairman.
Uh, yeah, I wouldn't sign that one.
This is the one, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Aura's suggesting you don't sign that one, that we sign that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Whichever. Fine, no problem.
Sorry about that.
Also, one signature needs to be authorized, so, one person might want to sign, uh, that's a null or void.
Gotcha, um, Richard, would you have any availability to see the town clerk tomorrow and do that?
Uh, tomorrow, I don't know.
Well, you just signed it, so it doesn't matter.
I have to go. I have to go into Boston tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, I can, I can bring that in, and, sure.
I can bring it to Lisa on Friday, I got an assessor's meeting.
That would be perfect.
That'd be great, oh, that'd be perfect, yeah.
So, uh, so then I'll sign it, and Dan will sign it.
Oh, look at that, it's going in a nice order.
Well, Dan abstains, so.
Oh, that's right, and David, you'll just take it on it, great, that works out perfectly, thank you.
Let me give you the first piece of the sheet, then, of the paper.
I just thought abstaining might number, right?
Well, you have to. Guy's not here to do anything to his.
I'm not filling this out at all. I'm not filling this part out, right?
No, no, you're just.
We only need, we only need three signatures, so we're good.
There you go.
Just so we meet here on Friday? Ever? So hey, can we print it to you, to make a copy for the files?
Eight o'clock in the morning?
Are you at nine, right there?
So late, geez.
Because I have to go to the meeting in the morning?
All right. All right, on to standard business, uh, discussion status report on finishing construction of and acceptance of uncompleted and slash unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pier Ponta Estates, nothing new there, right? Country View Estates, Eisenhower Drive?
The letters are going to be sent out, um, Friday.
Oh, that's right, yeah, we decided that.
Yeah, they're all, yeah, for.
Eisenhower.
Yeah, for Eisenhower, is that the, is that Eisenhower?
Betterment, yeah.
Yeah, for the Betterment.
Betterment discussion.
Yeah, the Betterment discussion, that's going to be for the 13th.
Um, Lions Estates?
No, nothing.
Nothing. Is anybody taking a ride through there lately? I haven't even been up there in a.
I can do that on Friday.
Huh?
I can do that on Friday.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
There's no complaints, so. And Sophie's Way?
We did get some documentation for Sophie's Way, um, hold on, um, it looks like there will be a price reduction, um, which is provided in the standard business tab. There are questions on it, and it looks like Graves ended up, um, completing the work there so far, right now, and, um, Jeff Welsh ended up sending me a report on it, so, summary.
I noticed there was a second foundation that was a little too close to the lot line, they were going to build before the ZBA, but that was canceled, and that's like two of them in the same subdivision. Do we have as-built for that one?
Where's that one?
So I can answer that, because I'm going to answer it in a general, uh, in a general way. As-bills for subdivisions are generated at the completion of the subdivision, so.
What about before?
There's an as-built that would be generated for each lot, um, at the point when the foundation gets put in, and that would be when the building inspector, when the as-built is provided to him, that's when he would, he would become aware of a situation, if there was a situation there.
Like that one where Richard was arguing with that guy, that one meeting, where he built it too close, and he had to do the A&R plan? Lot 5?
Yeah, um, yeah, so that's exactly what happened there, the engineer did the A&R, and realized that when they went out and staked it, they were off by two and a half feet.
But our subdivision control laws also state that we need a, an as-built before the pavement goes down. That's what Richard brought up, and June, or July meeting, June meeting, must have been June, the one that I missed. There's supposed to be an as-built before the pavement goes down.
So an as-built, an as-built shows the position of?
Might not be as-built.
Yeah, because as-built's not the right, no.
Might not be the same, or, but it's a, you know.
Yeah, because the problem is you can't show the position of the, you can't show the, the exact position of the road, the paved road, if the pavement hasn't been put down yet, so it's not an as-built, you must be thinking of?
No, it's in the control law, subdivision control law.
Well, you've got a definitive plan that was recorded and approved by the board, how is that not showing what you're asking?
Well, to show that the, the road is put in the right place, because if you pushed it too far back, and that's why these guys are, are coming up short, and they're, and they're, um, their as-bills for their houses, individual houses.
No, that's not mine. You're saying, your contention is, you believe the road was built too short, and that's what's causing them to put their houses in the wrong place?
I'm saying that's a possibility, if the as-built's not where it's lining up where it should be, that it's two different houses, that's half of them, the other ones in A&R plan. So half of the houses in the subdivision are built in the wrong, in the wrong spot, it's two different builders, right? I was going by common denominator.
Well, I'm just looking at the site, the visit report, um, prepared by Jeff Welsh. This would be dated September 19th, 2023, based on visual observations only, the work observed, is it 2023 or 2024 that this occurred?
There's two.
I thought he wasn't there last year.
Part of the historical record.
You're talking about the site visit report?
Yeah.
There's a date at the top?
Yeah.
I think that's.
Date, date is incorrect, it's a typo.
Should be the 2024?
Should be 2024.
Okay.
Yeah, because the date, the September 18th date is correct.
All right, well.
And then the other one is, uh, because it was the grading on one day and paving on the following day.
Well, the verbiage, I think, is the same on both, if I'm not mistaken, and based upon visual observations only, the work observed today appeared to be consistent with the approved definitive plans. And I think our fallback has been to defer to the expertise of the town engineer, and reach the arts to matters of construction or development.
So back to this thing that I was talking about, this, whatever it is, whether it's an as-built or not, is it something we're not requiring anymore? Because I know there's one for my street, for my house, or not my house, my, my subdivision, that's like 20, 30 years old.
Okay.
I think we made that the resource.
We would have to need a, uh, we would need a copy of the subdivision regulations, so that I can see exactly what it is, because I don't want to, I don't want to speak in generalities here.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna call for a recess, and if we can get the subdivision regs in here, because?
Yes.
We want table this until next meeting?
Do we have a copy in the back of the binder? Yeah, there's a copy in the back of the binder.
I don't think we need a recess for this.
So we want to recess five minutes and check the subdivision regulations and see exactly what you're talking about, instead we want to actually delay this one month?
Yeah, I think we'll see that.
Not to you.
Is it going to change anything? Whether we talk about it in five minutes or in a month?
Absolutely, because if we talk about it in five minutes and the issue's resolved, the board could actually act tonight. How do you not see what a difference that makes?
Okay, what are we going to act on?
There's a request before the board for a reduction in the cash bond that's being held.
That's not on the agenda, though.
It is.
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yeah.
Sophie's Way?
Falls under standard business.
Sophie's Way standard business, okay.
It's, yeah, it's been standard business, so, if there's a reduction that's being requested, so I think it, it would prolongate the development for another, and then I think the meeting on the 13th, or we might have people there, so.
You've got the, so that, all right, so, David, why don't you find it, since you've got the question? You've got a green tab, subdivision rules and regulations of the town of Dudley.
Page 28 is referenced on the finalized bill plan.
Progress in finalized bills.
Yes.
On installation of the sewer, water, gas, and/or underground electrical systems, prior to the installation of the pavement binder course, the subdivider shall submit to the planning board engineer or other designee of the, of the board, the planning board office, definitive data identifying the location and elevation of all structures and services for such sewer, water, gas, and/or electrical systems, including cleanouts, shut-off valves, and lateral stubs serving each lot in the subdivision. This information shall be presented as a progress as-built plan, which shall indicate the actual location of the subdivision improvements completed to date. Doesn't say anything about the paving, doesn't say anything about that having to be done prior to paving.
Installation, yeah, it says right in the first sentence.
Prior to the installation of pavement binder course.
On installation, uh, oh, yeah, okay, and prior to the installation?
Where, excuse me, if I may, is that section 23, page 28 that we're referring to here?
Yeah, page 28, section 23, progress as-built plan.
On installation, okay.
All right, so. So a progress as-built plan was supposed to be submitted, according to this, progress as-built plan was supposed to be submitted prior to the binder coat being placed, and we don't have a progress as-built plan, that's what you're saying? All right. All right, so the question before the board now would be, how do you want to handle it? Because you can't undo that, and the last, I can't, what was it, Lyons, was the last one we had come in?
Just because they didn't do it, just because we, we made a mistake before. Obviously, my subdivision has, that's 30 years old, so this has been there for a while. But, my question to you is, as a developer, well, not as a developer, but in, as a general developer, when you put in the water sewer, or just the sewer lines, do they have, you know, maps, that, that as-built type of thing?
Yes, they, yes, they did, because, because all of those houses had the, one, two, three of those houses have now tied into the laterals.
So they have, the water department probably has a copy of whatever they installed, right?
Yes.
And same thing with National Grid?
That, yeah, that, that I know, because they came down with, uh, in the case of the sewer, it's actually the sewer department, but in the case of the sewer department, I was actually on site when a lot of that was done. I know they came down, they checked the trench before they backfill it.
Yeah, so they had a plan, and, and, uh, the, what's his name, Mike, is it Mike, the sewer guy?
Uh.
Whoever signed off on it, signed off on it.
Yeah, they, no, they, Mike's on medical leave, I think, or something, so they had somebody else come down and do it, but they did do it, Brian came on one day.
The water guy?
Yeah.
So, just my opinion, I, I would be fine with just those two pieces being put into the folder for Sophie's Way.
Okay.
Just to show where it is, because I don't know, one of the, um, one of the major things that they were talking about for this water line going down Eagle Drive is they don't know where the, the stuff is, because there's no as-built.
Yeah. That was a problem.
I'm pretty sure there is an as-built, because they have one.
You talked about that with the whole Village Street and everything, that whole project there, too.
That's probably the same thing, right?
It's ancient, yeah, that's, that's going way back.
So I'm thinking 50, 60 years down the road, when that becomes an actual town-accepted road, undeeded.
The good news about this one is, the line is straight between two manholes, so.
So maybe follow up with water and sewer to see, um.
If you can get a copy of?
Yeah, they must have something.
All right, so we're on the table left.
You might have to be the one that talks to National Grid, though, because they only talk to customers. I don't think they would talk to the municipality. But they have a plan, I know they have a plan, because they had one for Bonner Road.
Actually, I have a copy of that plan, I, I can furnish a copy of that.
Just my thinking, I don't know if you guys are.
Because the process, again, in generalities, the process typically is the developer approaches National Grid, but National Grid actually does the design work at the developer's expense, and then they provide you a final plan of what they're going to put in.
Yeah, you got, you don't do anything, right?
Transformers and.
You just sign off and pay?
Just write the checks. Bless you.
But I don't think it would hurt to reach out to Lyons Estates, too, ask him if he has a copy of his. He has something, telling us that.
Just to ask for the?
Just like, yeah, the progress as-built, see if he's got something.
What in mind is, that, that would be for the next update for the state?
And that other one, too, Legacy Landing, is that the one by you, Richard? That's what they call it?
Legacy Landing, but we have, we've had empty-dumpty waivers that we granted them, I don't know whether anything was considered at that point, when they were putting that together or not.
Are the regulations any different for a special permit?
I wouldn't think so, but.
For what?
Well, because it's a condominium complex, so.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So I don't know if, I don't know if this, this, yeah, this is not, this is conventional subdivision. So that's why I think it might be different for them. So anyways, the question before the board is whether or not.
The price reduction?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, based on the report from Welsh Engineering? Walsh?
Graves?
Graves Engineering.
Jeff Welsh, yeah, I'm getting confused, thank you, for Graves Engineering.
I was, I was, I was trying to cross this network.
Well, we got sidetracked for a little while, so I got sidetracked, too.
No problem.
But based on the report from Graves Engineering, um, I make a motion that we reduce the? Is it bond or surety?
That's a cash bond.
A cash bond, we reduce the amount of the cash bond by the, to the recommended amount.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Edmiston, a second from Mr. Clark, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining, it's the first time I've gotten it, so I haven't looked at it.
So you're abstaining for which reason?
Because I haven't even looked at it.
So I have to abstain because of my personal involvement with the project, so the motion fails?
Yeah, they don't have a.
Oh, they have the quorum voting, then?
2-1.
Hmm?
Because the quorum, right, we need a voting quorum?
Yes, but if Guy is in here, and if you're, yeah.
All right, so? We wait a month?
Is it part of the record that this will be brought up again at the next scheduled meeting?
Right.
Yeah, so, I don't know, I guess I gotta, what do I gotta do, am I going to make another formal request? Because we're not tabling it to the next meeting, it's basically, it failed. If we had known that Mr. Durgan was going to abstain and the motion was going to fail, these gentlemen probably would suggest that we table it until he was satisfied.
You could have sent this over this whole week, when did you get this?
I sent it over.
This is the first time we're seeing this, right now, right now.
I came over to check on it today, I'm sorry, yesterday, with Aura, or, I was here yesterday, correct?
Yes.
And I had said that I had sent it over in the email, and you had checked, and you had found that it was pretty far down the list of emails that had.
Well, because I don't work.
Right.
Yeah, and my apologies for being stuck in the.
So, Mr. Chairman, just.
I made my formal rep, uh, presentation to the town clerk on Friday.
Just my uneducated opinion on this one is that we don't have a voting quorum. There isn't, we require three people to vote as the voting quorum, with a quorum, quorum not present, we don't have a failed motion, we have, it can't be, it can't be, it can't be decided.
Okay.
That table is the motion.
That's why I was like saying that we don't have a quorum, because if Guy is in here, and if you're, that's what my understanding was.
Okay, we have a quorum of members, but two of the members are voting, so we don't have a voting.
That's what, yeah, okay.
All right, so if that's the case.
We can table, I mean.
We can table, but I just can't make this suggestion.
You can't, yeah, yeah.
Because of my involvement.
Motion to table it, or, what do we have to resend, or?
No, I think we can just put this back in, and then also I will follow up.
Do we need a motion to table?
I can, yeah, I can do that.
All right, I, I will make the motion, and if we table, consideration of Sophie's Way, as far as the reduction of the surety is concerned or the bond is concerned?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's three ayes, and I'm abstaining, on the motion to table this to the next meeting.
I'll make sure to follow up with that, with water and sewer, that's in there, too. Follow up with Jeff to change the date.
Okay. Now, back to the agenda. Okay, that was the last thing we had under standard business, on to inspections and actions associated with site plans, uh, Legacy Landing, Country Club Acres, anything new there?
Uh-uh.
Uh, SEP Solar, Oxford Ave?
Nothing there.
J D and D, 24 Oxford Ave?
Nothing there, yep, oh, wait, um.
So we still, yeah.
Yeah, nothing there.
All right.
I ended up emailing the, um, developer, um, asking if they're ready to close out that, so nothing there.
No reply?
No.
No reply at all?
Yeah, I'll just have to email him again.
All right. I, I have a feeling that somebody's going to come in as a new owner and just be kind of surprised when we tell them, oh, hey, guess what, you've got some issues over there. Uh, Stevens Mill, nothing new there.
Nothing.
Um, solar project at the landfill.
Nothing.
Dudley Housing Authority.
Um, I did follow up with the, um, what's his name, um, the engineer there, um.
Right, because that was a different engineer we, right?
Yeah, there was a different engineer, yeah, so I'll follow up with him again.
Okay, all right, I mean, that one's got to be.
That one should be, that one should be done.
Who was that one?
Just, yeah, we just want to hear officially that it's.
That it's officially closed out.
All wrapped up.
Yeah.
Because it was only, it was only one, a couple little things left.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was, yeah, such a small.
Couple things to close out on.
Can't imagine that's going to be too much of an issue, um, we have anything on Planner's Plate?
We do, um, it's in regards to Mr. Salinas, he ended up reaching out, um, he's thinking of. making his seven, seven family, or it was a four family, and then, do you guys remember the context of, okay, so it was, then he wanted to get the motion for seven family and get a special permit, but he came and he said of thinking doing a six family and taking out two of the parking spots. So, I guess the conversation lies in, it's like, would we have to do a special permit for that, then?
So, I spoke with Jesefer about this today, because the irony is, if he hadn't done seven units there, and then came after the fact, asking for the permission, and if he had just stuck with six units, he wouldn't even have to come before the planning board for the special permit at all, because he would fall into that threshold for the, he'd have less than seven units, and then he wouldn't have to put as many parking spaces in, so he could get under, he would have nine parking spaces. So that automatically puts him in a position where he doesn't have to come before planning. What's unusual about this situation is, he already put those in, so there are seven units existing. So my problem with this is, if we now tell him that he doesn't have to come before us, I think we need some kind of assurances that he is going to follow through with his word and remove that basement apartment, because that's what he's talking about that he wants to do. He's saying he'll change the basement apartment to a laundry room, and then that way he gets down to the six units, gets him under. So, I don't know how you guys feel about it, and I'd like to, like to hear your opinion. My thoughts were that maybe we could send a letter from the planning board explaining to him that, making it very clear that if he, if he's going to move forward and actually will remove the basement apartment and reduce the parking spaces, that he doesn't have to come before us for a special permit. Again, making it clear that he has to do that, and also making it clear that this in no way affects his responsibility for having to go before zoning, because that's his next stop after here, because he still has, he has a lack, he has a problem with frontage for as many units as he's putting in, even if he goes to six, and he's got a problem with lot area, and there may be something else that I'm missing, but...
Sprinklers?
The sprinkler, the lack of sprinklers in that, that's a building code issue, so that's...
He has twenty, what's some other issues with that, so he...
Right, well, a lot of those twenty-one issues, though, were for the peer review from the special permit, that application that he made, those actually go out the window because of the fact that...
Okay, that makes sense.
We're basically saying he doesn't have to do the special permit if he takes out the apartment.
Site plan, right?
Yeah.
Minor site plan, I thought it was.
Yeah, and actually was supposed to be a major, now that we look, when we looked, remember we went through that whole thing, we were like, oh, it turned out to seven and ten? Because of the language being kind of obscure there? So, that's where we stand, but for him to come in and bring in a site plan, if he brings in a site plan that says, I'm only putting six units in, and I'm only going to have nine parking spaces, the question would be, well, why is he even here? Because according to our regulations, that doesn't trigger a site plan, not even a minor. I know, it stinks.
I would think we need some sort of verification, something along the way, because I, what I recall of our conversations or discussions with the gentleman is that there's some questions in terms of credibility and accuracy, if you will, maybe accuracy more than credibility, but verification, what's the expression, something about, and then verify, trust but trust but verify, or something to that effect, I think we need...
I don't know, but I think that...
And who provides that?
That horse is out of the barn, so to speak, so I think, why don't we just, why don't we just deal with, we have a golden opportunity here to basically take this off of our table, so to speak.
Because he's gonna, he's one...
Because he is, he is by, by no means is he going to be able to pull something off here, because he's going to go to zoning next, and the ZBA is going to know that he needs all of these things. And the Dudley Fire Department is aware that that building needs to be sprinkled, so... And the building inspector is well aware of what needs to be done there also.
There's nothing we can do anymore.
That's my feeling.
Pretty much.
And the only thing that I, the caveat that I have was, even though we're saying we can't do anything, it's like, well, technically, he hasn't taken the apartment out yet, so what I do not want to see is, I do not want to see a situation where if we just say to him, he doesn't have to come for a special permit now, and we just leave it at that, what my concern would be, what if he takes that and then goes to the next board and says, well, this was already, this was approved by planning, or planning signed off on it, or planning said, there's nothing that they need to deal with here?
It's on our table, because the building inspector brought it to us, so he's not going to issue those permits.
Right, exactly, exactly, so...
Just turn blind eye, there's nothing we can do, it's not our jurisdiction.
But we could still do the...
It's technically your jurisdiction on the ZBA.
We could still do a letter...
Yeah, we can...
Officially stating our position as planning, that our position as the planning board is that if this is only going to be six units and nine parking spaces, it does not meet the criteria for a minor site plan review.
And we copied the ZBA on that letter.
And we copied the ZBA, and we copied the building inspector, and we even copied the Dudley Fire Department, so that they're aware that this is by no means us saying, go ahead, move your tenants in, which, as David already pointed out, that's, you can't get the occupancy permit until the building inspector is satisfied, so...
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know how the owner is planning on making an apartment a laundry room, there's a square footage difference, obviously, it could obviously be, he could call the space a lot of things, he could subdivide the space into storage or a laundry room, there's a lot of things that could be done, and all those things can be reversed at some point in time, impossible. The thing that makes a unit livable is the bathroom. So I would recommend that we write a letter with a recommendation to the parties mentioned that, and I, just let me digress for a second, this is an open item on our agenda, so I think therefore we do have some kind of voice in the matter. It's an open item, he came before us talking about seven apartments, so therefore it is open, it is in our ball court in some way, shape, and form, and I think one way of getting that off our plate is saying, hey, we've heard that the developer is willing to go to six apartments by changing the basement apartment into a, other rooms. We're in agreement with this approach if the restroom is taken offline or is made only accessible from a public way. So if he has a main hallway and that bathroom is accessible from the main hallway, it then becomes a common bathroom, not associated with that apartment, and therefore the apartment remains unlivable, uninhabitable.
I think that's, again, that's where the building inspector's jurisdiction comes in.
It is a jurisdiction, but I'm just saying we make that recommendation, then it's only a recommendation, we have no formal...
I agree with everything you've said, except for one thing. I actually do not believe that this is currently an open item on our agenda, because we actually had him withdraw his special permit, yeah. Remember that night we said, because we were under the statutory deadline, we actually told him, we said, look, either we're going to vote tonight, we're going to defeat it, we're going to vote it down, or we're going to let you withdraw without prejudice so that you can bring back...
Yeah.
I still think we have a obligation to anybody who might be...
It's on our radar, I'll say that, for sure, absolutely.
To make this letter and make this recommendation.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the reason why I'm bringing this up as a planner's plate item is because he has called me and he's emailed me and talked about bringing this up in the next meeting, and he wanted to reopen his application for a seven family to a six family and take off two parking spots, so then Stephen and I were having a discussion about this, and he, we were just like, yeah, let's talk about this in the planning meeting and how to go about it, because I was like, should this be put in the agenda, because it does not meet...
Right, that's what my, my discussion with Jesefer was, that it doesn't make sense for him to come before and make another application, if he's going to come in with an application that shows six apartments, because now he falls into the criteria of the requirement.
Yeah.
Well, we're presupposing that he's going to make that application for six, but we don't know that officially, we don't have anything from him.
Yeah, he was going to put in...
It sounds like what you've had is a discussion with him in very general terms.
He talked with his engineer, and he talked with his lawyers, and...
With all due respect, he told you, he spoke to you.
Yeah, he, sorry, he told me, he spoke with everybody, and he was saying that...
We also had a, we had also had a tape survey that was, had hand-drawn details on it.
That's true, that's true, yeah, and he was just, yeah, he was just saying that, and, well, he threw it out this way, he put it out as, if I were to do this, and this is what I'm getting recommended to do, how do I put this new application in? And I said to him, I don't think you would have to put an application in, because it would not fall in that parameter, but let me check with our board and get back to you.
So I think we could just send him that letter, we just talked about, and the letter would basically cover that, the letter that clearly states, we need you to undo that apartment, and by undoing that apartment, you now would fall under the threshold for triggering a minor site plan review with the Dudley Planning Board. That way, we don't have to have him come back here and present some kind of...
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So, I would, I have no problem working with Jesefer on the language for such a letter, if you guys are fine with that, because I know basically, I know what we want to say.
As long as you're gentle about it, I remember you yelling at the guy.
Well, you can't yell on paper, so...
In my defense, I thought I gave him every opportunity to do a mea culpa and say, you know, you're right, I did, he could have at least said, I did do some work there, I built the decks that have the date code on it that tells you that the lumber was, you know, I mean, I, but just to stick to the...
Do we need a motion?
It's like the guy calling on video robbing the bank who says, it's not me.
Nobody, everybody plays innocent, Mr. Chairman, everybody.
Well, apparently, that's the, that's the new normal, right? Deny, deny, deny.
Do we need a motion, then? I would, I would then move that we entrust the town planner and the chair with crafting a letter to Mr. Salinas with regards to what we anticipate as a change in versus request for a number of apartments.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Clark.
Second.
With a second by Mr. Durgan, all those in favor? Aye. It's unanimous? All right, that was planner's plate, anything else on planner's plate, no? Okay, great. Comments from the planning board?
The only thing I would have, Mr. Chairman, is that the town meeting is October 21st, there's, like the article on the front page of the Webster Times, most recent edition, so there look to be there some issues that will be on the warrant that hopefully people will turn out for and make their feelings known.
Okay, all right, great. Anybody else, comments from anybody else? No, comments from the audience, nobody's here. Other business, set the next meeting date, so we decided we're still going to stick with the once a month?
The thirteenth, I think, right?
Yeah, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but I think that's...
Yeah, the sixth is the Wednesday, that'd be the thirteenth.
Okay, all right, so we're going to meet on the thirteenth of November?
Yeah, and we might have a lot of people there.
Right, if, yeah, if people read the letters and decide to come in for that informational meeting on the betterment process.
So that would be an informational meeting as opposed to a public hearing, then?
Correct, and we just...
Probably have that first on the agenda, too, just so they don't have to sit through the whole meeting.
Yeah, good point, so...
That would definitely go up the first thing on the agenda, absolutely.
Do we have final numbers yet in terms of what needs to be done up there, or are we still, still looking for that number?
No, it's the same problem as with Tobin Farms, when we started the whole discussion with Tobin Farms, unfortunately, the people came in and said, you know, how much is it going to cost?
Right.
We couldn't tell them, because it's, it's this maddening thing where you've got to have, like, one of the, one of the first steps after it's approved is the engineer goes out there and assesses the, you know...
And yet that is the critical element.
Yeah, you know, we can't get these engineers to go and do free estimates.
Oh, my, Circle Drive, they did a free estimate.
My job is free estimates.
All right, anyways, so that's, okay, so we've set the next meeting, we're good there, do we have any consultant vouchers or payments?
No.
No, okay.
Correspondence?
All right. Other town notices, I'm guessing nothing? Richard took care of that by telling us about the town meeting.
There's a town meeting, yeah.
Other correspondence, probably nothing? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn from Mr. Clark, we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Edmiston, second, all those in favor? Aye, unanimous.